I'm going to call to order this Lacey City Council meeting on October 24th, 2019. If you are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we have an agenda, and obviously today is Budget Day, but we do have a small agenda. Can I get a motion to approve?
I move that we accept the agenda and consent agenda items as listed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, and we have an agenda. And first up on our agenda is public comments on items not on the agenda. First, we have Wayne Olson. Can you guys please state your full name and keep your comments for about three minutes?
Yes, my name is Wayne Olson. I'm a new resident of Lacey, but not new to the area. I was born and raised in Olympia, left the area after high school for a 30-year career in the Navy. And after seeing what the rest of the world has to offer, my wife and I have returned to our favorite area of the world, right here for retirement. My mission tonight is climate change. And I have several like-minded neighbors with me whom you have seen many times before, and to give me support my first time speaking before you. As you probably were, students from the area high schools organized a youth climate strike on Earth Day last month and presented a truly impressive program on the Capitol steps. An estimated 2,000 people attended the rally. Tonight, I'm serving as mailman to deliver postcards with notes from a number of the students. This packet includes original postcards from about 40 participants from Lacey and copies of cards from about 550 other Thurston County participants. The printed message on the postcards reads in part as follows: "To the city council members of Olympia, Lacey, and Tumwater, and the commissioners of Thurston County. Thank you for your commitment to the Thurston County Climate Mitigation Plan. For us at the youth climate strike, our future, our survival, depends on effective action. We understand effective action costs money. We urge you to expedite the plan, find new sources of revenue, and adjust your budget. We don't have two years or even one year. The house is on fire, as Greta Thunberg said, and we must act now." The Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, the IPCC, noted, quote, "The decisions we make today are critical in ensuring the safe and sustainable world for everyone, both now and in the future," end quote. Now is the time to act with moral courage. Each of these cards is signed with the name of their school and city. Original cards for Olympia and Tumwater students are also being delivered to their city councils. As time permits, I would like to read a few excerpts that our future leaders, the next generation, have added to backs of these cards. "From a Timberline High School student, I urge you as lawmakers to take action now and save our youth's futures. We cannot eat oil. We cannot breathe money. Please think of the future generations because without action, we will have no future. Wake up and realize the reality that climate change is an emergency and act like it." Second one, from a North Thurston High School student, "There's still time to make changes, so let's make them while we still can." From another high school student, "What harm could it do? The more you help the climate now, the more you can fix other issues later. If you wait until it's too far gone, imagine how much more it will cost. Find the money and make the change now." And even from a middle school student, "Denial is not a policy. The climate is changing. Why aren't we?" So, my comment being, I especially congratulate the Lacey City Council for your commitment to the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. I'm convinced that coordination at all levels of government, federal, state, local, as well as international, are needed to solve the global threat to our grandchildren's survival.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much. And I'd like to leave then not only the cards, but then the copies of all 550 of the other students who were on the Capitol steps.
Great. Next up is Carolyn. Please state your full name and keep your comments for about three minutes.
Carolyn Treadway. I live at Panorama in Lacey, and I'm here to follow up with Wayne's talk because I was especially impressed with the postcards from little children. There would have been far more than 600 postcards signed if we hadn't run out. When we made them, we couldn't have any idea we would have that many people. Little children, I think of one who said, "Help the earth," and drew a picture of the sun and put a heart in the middle of it, and printing, showing that they were just learning how to print. Another, "Let us live." Another, "So we can have a future." Another, "Time is running out." Jason, who's nine years old, wrote, "The earth is slowly dying, and we need to take action to solve it because there is no planet B." Wise little boy. And then I thought of this one, "Dear important person, if we don't take action, in one century or less, Lewis County will be an inland ocean. Dear people, please do something. I wish to live happily, and you are going to be able to help me." Climate disruption is a really urgent issue. As Greta Thunberg says, "The house is on fire." Our house is on fire. This is not a partisan issue, not a political issue, not an economic issue, not a financial issue. It's a global issue because it's a human issue. We humans are destroying and trashing the ecosystems which are important, vital, for our survival. This is our only home, and we are all in it together. But in our protected enclave of privilege where we live here in Lacey and Western Washington, it is so, so hard to comprehend the urgency. I was trained as a climate leader by Al Gore in 2007 for what is now called the Climate Reality Project. And since then, I have read or acted about the climate, I think, almost every single day. So, I know about climate disruption, but having it here in my gut viscerally is a different matter entirely. I had a moment of awakening, or a day of awakening, or a week of awakening, I don't know what, a couple of years ago, where climate disruption moved from out there to in me. And that was the day that I left the front door of my house, walked across the little street, got my mail, and walked back into the house. It didn't take more than five minutes. And by the time I got back in the house, I was coughing and coughing and coughing. And that went into a respiratory illness that lasted for about six weeks. And it was bad air, and I had no clue that I was sensitive to bad air, because we didn't have bad air like that in Illinois where I had recently moved from. And we had bad air because of climate disruption, because climate had changed and now made the conditions for forest fires so much greater. And we had forest fires that August with ash or smoke coming from northeast, east, south, and west around Lacey. And I now consider myself kind of like a canary in the coal mine for bad air, and I had no clue.
Thank you. You've kind of reached your time limit. If you want to wrap up real quick?
Yes, I'll wrap her real quick. The astonishing thing is how fast it's moving. When I was trained in 2007, I was told certain projections that were for possibly to happen by the end of the century, which have already happened now, like ice melt up in the North Pole and the South Pole. Why does that affect us? That means sea level rise in Bud Bay. There is no away. We breathe the same air. We live by the same waters. So, I'm so glad that you're signed on to the Climate Mitigation Plan and want to urge as quick action as possible. Let's not wait until everything is decided before we start taking actions right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Phyllis.
My name is Phyllis Sturgis, and I also live at Panorama along with these three other people. And I just, I came tonight to urge you to do what these people are saying, but also because I'm so pleased to be here, because I spoke to you several times when you were struggling with whether to join the other cities. The three cities were all struggling to decide whether they were going to work on a mitigation plan. And you decided to do it, and Olympia decided to do it, and what's the other one?
No.
Decided to do it. And now, there's a Thurston County mitigation plan. So, I'm just here to tell you that I'm proud of what you're doing, and I'm very happy to have worked on this during this period of time. It's been two or three years now. And let's get on with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ruth? So good to see you, Ruth.
I'm with, with the rest of them, we're members of the Thurston Climate Action Team. I just want to say a few practical words. I have not had any fossil fuels in my home or my vehicle since 2010. I've had two different electric cars during that time, plug-in cars. They're, well, I've thought about it. No oil, no gas, no water, no emissions, no tailpipe, no noise. What is there to not like about that?
I agree.
All-electric cars. And you just plug it in overnight, once in two weeks or so. If you had them for city cars, you'd probably plug them in every night, but you'd certainly have plenty of power to do your business and not be polluting the air. I don't know whether you have any electric cars at the present time or not, but I think it would be a real advantage for the city to do so. When I had the first one, I got a Consumer Reports magazine from which I could calculate how much electricity was costing me, came out to $20 a year for the amount of driving that I was doing, which is local, pretty much local. So, it's not expensive. So, I'm, at my age, I'm a person of action. I'd like to see concrete things happening and less talk. But, well, that's why, I think that's why I so much enjoyed the youth climate strike. I was there. I heard them. It's a wonderful future they're trying to make for us, is what I would say. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Ruth. So good to see you. Next up is David.
I'm not here on climate change. I related to the Swedes. Do you remember those Vikings when they had global warming from 800 to 1,200?
Uh huh.
So, all survived it. Anyway, my name is Dave Lindelblom. I met a lot of you about eight days ago when I stood up and got the audience quiet for you.
And can you give your, say where you're from, David?
I was about to do that.
Thank you.
I hope it's not part of my three minutes. My name is David Lindelblom. I've been a resident of Lacey for 52 years, and at my current location for 4403 22nd Avenue for 48 years. 22nd Avenue was paved when I moved in and has had two, three, or four-inch overlays on top of it since. So, it's higher now than it used to be. The construction noise is getting closer. We have a political mess masquerading as improving our street. The city is building a large roundabout at the other end of that street. They attached to that project, which I'm told is $5 million, our own 22nd Avenue project of 120,000, to solve a problem that was already solved years ago. Okay? In essence, they're moving our street five feet north. They're putting in a five-foot-wide shoulder on our side and destroying the 13-foot-wide ditch and parking area on the other side. Five feet for the road, one foot for the curb, and making a new seven-foot-wide shallow ditch. So, next time we get any visitors, they'll have to park blocks away and walk, and heaven forbid that they might have walkers or wheelchairs. On one side of our road, the rainwater will still flow into our ditch. No curb is in the plans on our side. On the other side, there's a curb to prevent rainwater from going into the new ditch. The curbed water will go into a catch basin and then deep into a 12-inch drain to be carried away to a purification pond to separate out the oil drips from our cars. To build all this, they will use hundreds of tons of asphalt, which is made from crude oil. When they place it, the smelly part escapes into the air, choking out people like me who have severe lung disease. Over time, the asphalt breaks down and its oil leaches into the ground. They will plug the cracks with more hot oil. Eventually, in about 10 more years, they'll pour hundreds of tons of more oil made into asphalt back on the road again. All this to protect the environment from the few drippy oil pans and transmissions off half the cars on 22nd. Why do I say half? Because the other half is going to wash directly into the ditch, as it has for decades, according to the plan. Also, the lane width is being reduced from 11 feet to 10, or 10 and 1/2 feet. You know, I'm talking about the 1,200 feet between college and golf club. Nothing to do with the roundabout. This is all separate but attached in. One neighbor jumps for joy. "No one can park in front of her house anymore, but her guests can now park," she says, "on the five-foot strip on the other side." Last year, she parked her camping trailer for over a year along the street there. She bought a new car that didn't have a tow hitch. Of course, now you have this new four-hour limit, so I ought to take care of that, I hope. Mostly, 22nd did not need any of this work. The drains and dry wells that were put in since the earthquake first came up solved the problem. I and a number of other neighbors are unhappy over the lack of notice regarding this. One letter, May 6th, has one in minuscule line down 22nd, which we did not recognize as part of the project. Our first notice was the delivery of pipe and concrete. And second, I'm objecting to all the misinformation from your employees that doesn't even match the plans. I intend to follow up with a more detailed letter, but I think my time's up, and so I have for you folks, not the detailed letter, but it's got some of the details in it. So, if you can...
Thank you, David. Is there anyone else wishing to address this council, and any items not on the agenda?
I'm nervous. I can't type anymore. I should do that.
Thank you. I'll pass those rest out for you.
If you need any more copies, one of these is for me.
Thank you.
And I guess you can copy it to them.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, please.
It's all yours.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Sue Pierce. I signed up in the back, but I'm not sure if that piece of paper made it up front.
Sorry.
I'm a longtime resident of Lacey. I live on 27th Court. And I'm here to talk in opposition to Initiative 976. It's, I know the ballots are out there, but we haven't all voted yet. Some of us like to wait until the last minute.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to interject with this public comment period, but it's inappropriate for the city to allow comment or use of public facilities either for or against any active initiatives.
Is that against the law, code, if I may?
It's a violation of the revised code of Washington. That's correct.
I'm sorry.
I'm not allowed to speak on this issue?
No, I guess you're not allowed to use...
Public facilities.
Public facilities.
Which, the council's not authorized to allow...
I'll be checking into that at a later date.
Thank you.
I'd be willing to meet with you afterwards to discuss that.
Could I ask a question? So, how does that differ from a couple of weeks ago when we were entertaining a resolution on this topic?
Because that's a specific council member, that's a specific exemption to that prohibition. The code prohibits the use of public facilities for such a purpose, and then it lays out some exemptions. One such exemption is for the council to collectively consider a resolution or something in favor of or against.
But a member of the public is not allowed to state their opinion?
It would be, the statute prohibits the elected body from allowing the use of public facilities, and this would...
Question, if I may?
Please.
Thank you.
Yeah, we haven't really discussed...
This is interesting. Regarding that code, then, we ought to be stating public comment for items not on the agenda, and then listing all those exemptions of free speech.
Yeah. I mean, I...
She came here on her time.
Yeah, I understand. Obviously, we don't say right on the public comment period that we can't talk about this. Is that something that needs to be added?
We could. I think, again, just to be very clear, it's not an issue of free speech. The concern is, and it's state law, it's not just a revised code, it's the concern that you'd use public funds to the advantage of either an opponent or a proponent in using public resources, because as a community, we may not all agree on the issue. And so, that's why it makes it inappropriate to have someone, a member, talk about a candidate or an issue. The one exception, which you did act as a council body, you are allowed for that brief period of time to provide opponents or proponents to come and speak to council, so you can make a final decision on a matter. So, that's the issue.
Another question. Does this council have the right to vote to allow this individual to speak tonight freely?
No.
I would advise against that. I mean, what we're talking about is it's, it's state law that does not allow that. And so, for the council to vote and allow that would be a vote in opposition to state law. Thank you.
But, again, this is one of the reasons why we keep having this conversation about the whole resolution and whether we should do it. It is the, as of now, is the only way for us to get out information on issues. Now, I would like to have this conversation with this council if we can find another avenue to do that. And I've talked to the city manager about other possible ways, and we still need to have this discussion as a council. But that's what's so difficult about wanting to get out information, whether for or against issues that affect your city. There's only one ability to do that, and that's under the resolution form that opens up to the public where they can talk in for or against it. And if that's the only time it can happen, obviously, we can't have, obviously, we can't have someone do it now, unfortunately. You know, that's why...
I'll be looking into that for sure. But we also, as a council, did have the time to discuss the resolution and whether or not to propose it, so it's good.
So, we did have some time.
We did.
So, I just want to point out, we had, that was on top of a hearing for it. So, people could have come for at that time, for or against at that time.
That's correct.
I do wonder, excuse me, sorry, Mr. Mayor. I do wonder if there's an opportunity for us to create community conversations or programs where we would provide pros and cons specifically regarding our city as a community conversation about something like that. Would that fall under that same law?
Pros and cons might be problematic. Articulating facts would be appropriate, and I think this would be part and parcel to the conversation that the mayor's talking about potentially having, and ways to get information the council might want to express and how that could appropriately be done.
I'd like to thank councillor for doing your job and interjecting. That's not a comment for or against that ruling. I am, we're all discussing that, but thank you for doing your job.
Okay. Well, we learn something new all the time. So, next up, is there anyone else wishing to address this council on the items not on the agenda? Seeing none. Then we only have one other item on the agenda, and that's under the mayor's report. I have a slate of candidates that I've interviewed for our first Lacey Youth Council. The slate is listed. It's Anna, Kobe, Willa, Tao, Jordan, Daisy, and Zinyu. And it would be my recommendation that we appoint them to Lacey's first youth council.
Second. I would take that second back to...
Oh, I know.
It's been moved and seconded to advance them onto our first Lacey Youth Council. Is there any discussion, Deputy Mayor?
I have none. Other than, I would love if they're in the room to just stand up, if they wouldn't mind, so we can kind of visually see who's who.
We have three here.
Does the, does the council have time to hear a word?
You want to come up and introduce yourselves real quick?
You guys are interested.
Please come up, please come up to the podium. Putting you on the spot.
Hello, my name is Anna Brown. I come from Pope John Paul II High School. I want to thank Mayor Ryder very much for pointing me to this position. I am so excited to work with all of my fellow Lacey City Council members and my Lacey Youth Council members, and I'm so excited to serve the city of Lacey. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Willa Isle. I come from River Ridge High School. I've been living in Lacey since I was two months old and am now 17 and 1/2. Needless to say, I have a large commitment to the city and a passion for seeing it grow and the community strengthen. I am more than overjoyed to be a part of this new committee and to hopefully see some awesome initiatives spring up around the city of Lacey. Thank you again for this opportunity.
Thank you. Go Hawks.
Hello, my name is Daisy Villalobos. I as well attend River Ridge High School, and I just moved here recently. It's been about a year, and I want to become more involved. And I'm very thankful for this opportunity to be in the youth council for the first year. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question. So, for my reminder, just out of curiosity, were these students and the students that were not here, were they selected and appointed, or were they elected by their schools or appointed by their schools? Or what was the process?
They applied to be on the youth council through an application process very similar to being on our boards and commissions. We're obviously a little behind where we are hoping to be. By the time we finally, last year, finally agreed about the structure of a youth council and some objectives for the youth council, we weren't able to get out applications to get that process started till, it was like, early May. And that's a really difficult time to try to be reaching out to the high schools and trying to find people to think about the next school year. And so, I did several applications by early June, and we still had several schools that didn't have anyone apply for the position. Remember, it was the goal of this council that we would get someone from each of the major public high schools, the two private schools, someone who's doing running start, and also someone from who's being homeschooled. Yes. And so, or running start or running start or homeschooled. And the problem was, is we couldn't fill all those gaps. We couldn't get someone from South Sound High School. Right now, they're in the middle of a transition year, and their population or, you know, their student body dropped from 100 and something down to like 70. And next year, they're going to be, they're changing their name and the format of that alternative high school. And so, we were, unfortunately, we couldn't find someone. And so, that's why we have a little... little double up this year. And so, next Monday will be their first meeting, and I'm so sorry, I can't be at the first meeting. I'm actually out of town next Monday. I can't believe it, after all this time and all energy put into this, I'm going to miss the first council meeting, but the deputy mayor is going to be there and will film for me and get you guys started. And so, we're really looking forward to everything you guys are going to do this year, and we're so happy you're going to be part of the city of Lacey. So, thank you for applying, and thank you for being part of the first Lacey Youth Council. So it's been moved and seconded on the slate of candidates, all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed to that motion unanimously carried, welcome. Thank you.
Congratulations.
So, today is budget presentation day, and so we're actually going to adjourn for a couple minutes, two minutes, and then we'll open back up, and our city manager will present the 2020 budget. So I'm going to adjourn for about two minutes. I'm going to open up this, back up this Lacey City Council meeting on October 24th, 2019, and I'm going to hand it over to our city manager, Scott Spence, to present the 2020 budget.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. This is, happens, obviously, every year, and we talk about the expenses that we forecast for 2020. I would like to have a shout out. I think this may be the biggest crowd we've ever had for an annual budget presentation. We have some students from University of Washington from a journalism class that are here. I'm sure they'll write every word down, but it's just kind of nice to see that there's interest in the city of Lacey budget and their finances. I'd also like to point out, this is our budget cover. This is the 3rd of July event that we have at Reiner Vista Community Park. Beautiful shot. It's amazing that we live here, and it's one of those hallmark events that we have that make this a great community. So with that, I'd like to do a quick introduction, we'll get into the budget. So residents of Lacey, Honorable Mayor and City Council and city staff, the budget of 2020 is balanced, and it maintains the services and programs that have a direct impact on the quality of life within our community. A principal part of the 2020 budget is significant reinvestment in public safety and an effort to detail the city's support for social services. For tonight, I will provide a top-level overview of how the city of Lacey is funded and how those dollars are directed toward key city services, and I'll also highlight improvements planned for the coming year from public infrastructure to community enhancements. More importantly, the presentation will conclude with the cost implications for the proposed budget and what it will have on our utility customers and our taxpayers. So let's talk budget. So our total budget for 2020 is over $156 million. If you compare this to last year's budget, it is a little decrease, or it's a decrease of roughly $2.2 or $2.1 million. This is how our total budget is broken up, so you can see there's about six major components to the total fund. A lot of people talk about the budget, and they're really referring to the general fund, but this is the total budget in terms of how we finance city operations. The general fund is about 33% of our city expenditures. That's where we fund basic services such as the police, parks, streets, and public administration, as well as the RAC. Capital projects, which are about $17 million, is about 11% of the total budget. This is comprised of our Otero Street Fund, the TBD, our Transportation Benefit District, building improvements, parks and open space, and capital expenditures associated with the RAC. Special funds consist of three funds. This is the Hicks Management Lake District, the CDBG program, and also the lodging tax program, but it's less than half percent of that budget. We also have debt in terms of the city of Lacey, about $1.8 million, which is about a little over 1% of our total budget. And then utility funds, which is actually the largest piece of the pie of our total budget, which is over 51% of the total budget. That includes our water, wastewater, stormwater, our reclaimed water, as well as the MNO, capital and debt associated with those utilities. And then finally, internal service funds, those are the funds where we account for our city fleet, as well as our information services programs. So this is a history of our total budgets for the city of Lacey. This probably doesn't provide much information, because total budgets really rise and fall with capital expenditures. So from one year from 2018 to 2019 is really related to expenditures in our streets, our transportation benefit district, as well as community improvements. For perspective, though, in 20, or in 2001, our total budget was $57 million, so we have grown quite a bit since then. So, this is a whole lot of numbers. So let me try to break it down. What's the year-to-year change from 2019 to 2020? So there's about a $3.8 million difference from our 2020 budget to 2019. The reduction is really more to non-recurring projects like the Family Youth Support Center, grant that we gave the school district, housing initiatives, as well as the public records project, but also it's a reduction and decrease of transfers out of the other funds and also capital projects using one-time reserves. Typically, when you add employees, which we do propose in the 2020 budget, you'd see an increase, but those are the reasons for the reductions. Capital projects, our next one, is a difference of $1.6 million. This is also receiving a decrease, more just because of lack of construction activity. The biggest funds are really our Otero Street Fund and TBD, but they actually are remaining unchanged. We're actually doing more activity in our Otero Street Fund and doing less in the Transportation Benefit District. You may recall, we did the Supertee project, which is a $6 million project last year, or actually this year, and then we're only doing $2 million with our overlay project this year. Special funds are remaining unchanged, although there is a slight reduction. The Hicks Lake Management District has asked for a decrease. They'll be coming for council in the near future. And then LTAC is the other fund out of the special funds. Debt has remained fairly stable with a slight decrease. And then utilities are up $3 million, and that is a result of capital funding, especially in the water department. So we have a major project that we are incurring in the Capital Golf Club Estates area, so that explains that increase. And then internal funds are, again, remain relatively stable. We have large fleet purchases that we plan for 2020. So, the economy. A lot of what a city can do is based on what is happening in the economy, and because of this dependency, the city needs to be responsive to the changes of that economy to ensure that we can still sustain local services. So I've provided a couple charts that I think are interesting that are affecting our near future. So one is our economic expansion. We are now in our 122nd consecutive month of economic expansion. This is the longest economic expansion in U.S. history. Although fundamentally, the economy is sound, most experts believe we are due for a downturn in the economy. Primarily, people don't think the economy can grow at this pace forever. The inverted yield curve, maybe people have heard about this before. The inverted yield curve is seen as an indicator of future recessions, is actually predicted every recession since 1955, or it's occurred for every recession since 1955. Back in August of this year, we had an inversion of the two-year treasury versus the 10-year treasury, which really signals a lack of future or lack of confidence in the future. On average, when a yield curve inverts, it's preceded by a recession by eighteen months. The trade war with China, getting deep here in geopolitics, but this is a concern, obviously, for the economy. So since 2018, U.S. and China have traded tariffs on one another. That's affecting over billions of dollars of goods, which is essentially passed on to the consumer. Most economists believe this at some point will tip the U.S. economy into recession if not resolved. On a local level, council's seen this graph before, we do benefit a lot from construction. Construction, from the standpoint that provides one-time sales tax on that construction activity. The chart behind, the bar chart, is a growth of our sales tax within the city of Lacey, and then what you're seeing in the bar charts of the, say, the 2 million square feet of construction is that activity for that 2019. And you could see the rise or the correlation between those two. One thing to point out, the city of Lacey is built, or it's currently being built, on our last large parcel in northeast Lacey for commercial property, which is over 150 acres. That's the last parcel of that size remaining. So another sort of, that used to be a bellwether of the city of Lacey, was the construction of single-family homes. This is really no longer the primary driver of our local economy. 2019 is projected to be the third consecutive year that we are not going to issue 200 residential permits. By the end of the summer, we are cackling, we only have 435 available lots for construction. So there may be more in the pipeline, but that's the current supply that we have right now. So this is really just another sign that Lacey is transitioning from a growth-oriented community to a service and maintenance-type community. On the other hand, we do see an increase, or at least a steady increase, in multifamily housing. If you take 2016 and 2018, we've had over 1,300 permits issued for multifamily projects. In 2019, multifamily will actually outpace residential permits. So that is actually one area that is actually still growing. This is probably the more troublesome graph. This actually shows the amount of retail development the city has experienced since 2007. 2007 was the last major retail projects, Lowe's and Cabela's, that we had before the Great Recession. Since this time, we've had the Woodshed, which actually was an existing business that moved to a different location, and then Walmart, which is on Yelm Highway, which is not a superstore, but it's actually a grocery store. And grocery stores do not generate a lot of sales tax. So again, that's a concern from a city who is dependent on sales tax. So this sort of hits home, this is a resales tax per capita chart, and what it shows is from 2008 to 2018, we've had a declining retail sales growth compared to our population growth. And so this is a trend that we watch, again, given the fact that 24% of our revenue base is on sales tax. So enough about the economy, let's talk about the workforce. City of Lacey provides services to our 51,000 residents through 279 FTEs, our full-time equivalents. We have about 80% of those folks that serve the community are in the general fund, and then the other is in our enterprise funds and our water, wastewater, and stormwater. This shows kind of a historical graph of what our employment base has been, going back to 2007. You can kind of see back in 20, or 2009, that was really the Great Recession, and at one point in 2013, we bottomed out to about 241 full-time equivalents, and it took us about 2017 to kind of pull out of that before we actually had more employees working almost in a five-year period going back in time. So here are the enhancements. I mentioned at the beginning of the budget presentation that we're making a significant reinvestment in our public safety. We are going to be adding three police officers to the budget, although those will be paid out of reserves. Part of the reason we're doing that, it takes almost a minimum of 10 months to get an officer on the road, the time you go through the commission and all through field training, and so we need to be proactive and actually hire those prior to those retirements occurring. We also are going to be adding two Community Resource Unit officers to our budget. This is, they'll be added to our proactive unit that responds to community issues, as well as crime prevention initiatives impacting our business community. So I give us a five, or five complement of police officers for our force, and then we're adding two civilian positions to support the command staff, as well as the Community Resource Unit. All told, that investment is just under $900,000. The only other position that we are adding in the general fund is a building maintenance worker. We currently only have two full-time equivalent employees working on our buildings, which include such as building at City Hall, the Lacey Library, the Senior Center, Jacob Smith House, and the Community Center, so, or the library. So we have a number of buildings, and so we're going to add another additional FTE to actually help maintain that square footage that we have under our oversight. That workforce addition is about $100,000. This is a slide that council's seen before and think is important to share with the community. We, when we add personnel, I think we're always mindful of the costs and the community's ability to sustain their local government. This chart demonstrates, historically speaking, we are serving a greater population with fewer resources. If you go back in 2010, we had more people per thousand serving that population than we do today, even with the additions. So with those additions I mentioned, we will have a full-time equivalent workforce of 287. For perspective, if we use the baseline in 2010, we would actually have a 305 full-time equivalent workforce if you use the same equivalent per hundred or per thousand ratio. The other issue is social services. Social services, obviously, is impacting the city of Lacey. We have always supported social services, but it's been in various parts of the budget, and what we want to do is create a new section on page 319 to provide a better accounting for those investments that we make. Obviously, the city of Lacey is invested in making a differences, a difference in our community, and social services are a part of that. So this social service budget is about $880,000. It's broken up between the veteran services hub. It's broken up between the Veteran Services Hub, as well as General Services, and then also Homeless Services. I want to point out some key services in this budget. One is obviously the Lacey Veterans Services Hub. This is a full-service hub with fifty nonprofit partners that we opened in late twenty-sixteen. You can see in twenty-eighteen, we've serviced over six-thousand-plus total appointments for our veterans, helping them with housing assistance, financial assistance, healthcare. It's been a significant investment that this council has made to the veteran community. We are also going to be contracting with Community Action Council to get a social service navigator to assist our police. Our police do a great job, but they also need tools to deal with homeless response. This will be a person that we will have embedded with our police department, so when we come across issues of people in financial distress, they will be able to help navigate the resources that need to get them off the street. So that's an important investment for this year. We also have long-term partnerships that we've historically had in our budget, going probably back to twenty years. Together is one of those where we help support a neighborhood or after-school program at fifteen-thousand dollars. We have supported Grub for a number of years, building gardens for family to have more food security and sustainability. Salvation Army support at fifty-thousand dollars to ensure that they can provide emergency cold-weather beds for the community. And we also have been involved with our regional partners, Olympia, Tom Water in Thurston County, through something called the Health and Human Services Council. And this is our collective contribution at sixty-three-thousand dollars to deal with issues on a regional level. So now back to the general fund. So here is the general fund. It is fifty-one million dollars. As I mentioned before, it's about thirty-three percent of the total city budget. Again, here are the common services that are funded out of the general fund, police, streets, parks, community development, community events, the city manager. That's okay, no laughter, this is very serious. I just want to show how we fund the general fund and where those come from. So again, sales tax, as I mentioned before, is our largest source of revenue. If you take sales tax and property tax, that combines about thirty percent of our revenue base. Service fees obviously help offset the cost of our local government. Those fees include fees from community economic development of over one-point-three million dollars, parks and recreational fees, about one-point-four-five million dollars, and internal charges for public work staff that support capital projects, which is almost six million dollars. Utility tax is another revenue source, which is on utilities, which goes until the general fund, B and O tax. And then we also have state-shared revenues from, that gets distributed by the state that include gas tax, as well as liquor, as well as marijuana revenues. And then we also charge our utilities, because the general fund manages the utilities, water, wastewater and stormwater, and the overhead or indirect cost to that is one-point-two-three, which helps offset the cost of that service. So again, sales tax history for the city of Lacey. We are projecting a twenty-point-five-six million collection in sales tax for twenty-twenty. This is a one-point-five increase compared to twenty-nineteen. However, I think this sales tax increase better reflects actual collections compared to previous years. That's why the noted increase is there. Again, I'd point out the fact that a lot of our sales tax is based on one-time construction, so a lot of that is being buoyed up by the strong economy. Although, again, we need to be concerned about, because that's one-time revenue from construction. Property tax for twenty-twenty, we'll have a collection of seven-point-one-three million dollars. This includes an addition of sixty-seven-thousand dollars, or almost sixty-eight-thousand dollars, which represents the one percent cap. So the previous, if you compare it to twenty-nineteen, add the basically sixty-eight-thousand dollars, but also the two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars comes from new construction. And so that's constrains the property tax from twenty-nineteen to twenty-twenty. It's important to point out, in twenty-eleven, that is when Fire District Three annexed the city of Lacey, so we no longer provide fire services, but in twenty-ten, we used to contract with them, and so that's why we had a larger property tax base. So this is probably the lowest levy rate, I think it is, historically we've ever had, falling below a dollar. So it is ninety-nine cents per thousand for the general levy rate. This is really reflected on the increased assessed valuation of the city of Lacey. City of Lacey is now has assessed valuation of seven-point-two billion dollars. If you take all the property, all the residents, all the businesses within the city of Lacey, that is the value that is generated by that, and that's what we use for tax. I will point out, just because the rate goes down doesn't necessarily mean your taxes go down. It's all related to the relationship with assessed valuation. So as the tax rate goes down, that means the assessed valuation went up. So if you look at the valley in twenty-thirteen, in this area in assessed valuation, you'll see a corresponding increase in the rate, because in a sense, that's the distribution of what the fixed cast, the fist caught, I just sound like a Bostonian. The fixed cost related to the seven-point-one-three million distributed by this amount of money within the community. So I wanted to point that out. So what are we paying for out of that fifty-one million dollars in our general fund? Probably no surprise, the biggest expenditure in the general fund is public safety at almost fifteen million dollars. Public Works is our largest in number of people, but is our second-largest department that we have in the city of Lacey. I would point out, in terms of capital transfers, that's a budgeting number, but it's also, it shows where the money comes from in the general fund, and then some of those monies are transferred into our streets department, as well as our parks and open space fund, as well as our utilities. So that's, that's where the six-point-five-million dollars come from, and then you can see where the rest of the money is being spent. As I mentioned before, when we look at our full-time equivalent count just in general fund, Public Works is the largest department, eighty-four FTEs, followed by police, and then city manager, finance, city clerk, public affairs, HR is the third-largest department within the city. So I'd like to talk to you about what services cost, because I think that's the number-one question that people want to know. Obviously, public safety is something that people are concerned about. So what does it take to fund a police department? So a couple chunks. One is, if you just look at the public safety in general, and patrol's a big part of that, as well as the administration of that, that's a twelve-point-seven-million-dollar number. Then if you look at prosecution, because that's also part of the public safety system, that's just under four-hundred-thousand dollars. Then we have court services, that we actually do not have a municipal court. We actually contract with the district court with the Thurston County. That's just under nine-hundred-thousand dollars. And then ultimately, we are responsible for any jail costs, and so that is just under a million dollars, and that's how you get to fifteen million dollars for our public safety system. Now likewise, in parks and recreation services, just another important factor to the quality of life of the city of Lacey. So for general parks and recreation, which will include all of our parks and rec programs, our administration, that's about a two-point-six-million-dollar cost. We focus a lot on aquatics, like the Long Lake beach area, as well as swim lessons. That's a six-hundred-thousand-dollar cost to provide that service to the community. The Regional Athletic Complex is a one-point-two-million-dollar operation. And where maybe next biggest park is Rayner Vista, and that's just about four-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand dollars. And then really, the remaining thousand acres of park that's under our control takes about one-point-six-million dollars to maintain. So you have a six-point-four-million-dollar parks and recreation system, as well as park system to maintain. Streets are another important factor in our quality of life. No one likes to be stuck in traffic, so what does that take to maintain? So we have a general street department of about one-point-two-million dollars. You have roadside maintenance, that's about almost one-point-four-million dollars. You have street lighting, about a million dollars. And then signs and markings, about a half-million dollars. And then your sidewalks, which, not all cities do this, but the city of Lacey is responsible for sidewalk maintenance, so if there's a lifted panel, we actually, you'll call the public works department, we'll go out either and grind it or remove the panel. And so we have a two-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand-dollar program. I didn't mention snow removal, because snow removal is such a small part of the budget. It's less than a hundred thousand dollars. So that maybe indicate why we don't, are able to go into neighborhoods when we have a snow event. We can only pay attention to the arterial streets. So I just wanted to point that one out there for you. So what is the cost of the city workforce when you think about the general fund? So salaries and wages are just under twenty-two million dollars. If you add in benefits, that's another eight million dollars. So what this essence says is we have a thirty-million-dollar payroll obligation on a yearly basis, even if we don't add people. So I think it's, we need to know what that cost is, so when we provide those services, when we talk about two-hundred-and-eighty-seven FTEs, that is what the cost of providing that service to the community. So let's talk about some of the things that we plan to do in the near future that you'll see visible from our population, from the community. We are doing a major remodel in partnership with the Lacey Library. We own the building, but Timberland Library Services actually operates it. They're going to take their front counter and actually redo it and do something similar to what's on the lower right of that column, to provide better customer service to patrons. Believe it or not, we have not, the last time we did something with the library was back in nineteen ninety-one. That's when we opened that facility up. We're also going to be adding a family bathroom as part of that two-hundred-thousand-dollar cost. Rack field replacement, we're very proud of the rack and the amenity that it provides really to our citizens, and it's also a regional draw to our area. We are going to be replacing the synthetic field of the soccer field, which is Field One, which you can see on the slide, as well as the full-size baseball field on Field, Field Five, which is just the infield, not the outfield, because it has grass. This will be the last major synthetic overhaul that we have. We've actually been able to replace all other four fields, and we have reserves for the future. So we are doing a good job in maintaining and preparing for the future of the rack, so it becomes and remains an attraction for future years. Also, we're mindful of just the enjoyment of the rack. We are going to put fencing up along the outfield, so I guess this would be the right field and the left field of Field One and Field Two. As you walk into the rack, sometimes softballs get in your way. So this is a safety issue. We like to extend fencing and netting, so that will not happen in the future. The other project was College and Twenty-Second Roundabout. We're in our first year of construction in twenty-nineteen. This will be the final year of construction. This is part of the budget, just under four-point-five-million dollars to complete that project. This is really the first phase of the College Street Quarter Plan. There are future roundabouts expected on Sixteenth Avenue and Twenty-Ninth Avenue on College Street. Huxbury Road Marvin Round, or Marvin Road, is going to expand their current single-lane roundabout to a multi-lane roundabout. I know we have a lot of multi-lane roundabouts within the city of Lacey, but they are an effective transportation control device at our intersections. This is actually going to be in partnership with North Point, which is currently building on the corner of forty-six and, or Forty-first and Marvin Road. And so this is the city contribution to actually complete that project. If you've been down Ruttel Road sidewalk on the west side specifically, you'll see a deteriorating retaining wall. So we are going to begin this project, this will be a first phase of nine-and-forty-thousand dollars. We're needing to get additional right-of-way, but ultimately, we are going to create ten-foot sidewalks with tree grates and also put lighting in this area, forty-foot dual decorative lights to help with that area. The project limits are from Twenty-seventh Avenue just north of Thirty-Second Avenue. Mentioned the transportation benefit funds. We have two-point-one-million programmed in for next year. This will widen the shoulder on Burdian Road and include new asphalt for the roundabout at Orion. This is again, a two-point-one-million-dollar project. The Train Depot play structure. Some may know that we're building the historic Train Depot that existed in our community off of Lacey and Pacific Avenue. The Lacey Rotary approached us for a fiftieth anniversary partnership, and we're going to be building with them a train-themed playground structure right next door. So that will begin next year. We're pretty excited to have that amenity next to the depot. We're also going to be replacing new playground equipment in Busch Park. That Busch Park is off of Yelm Highway. This is our oldest playground structure for five-to-twelve-year-olds in our system. At twenty-four years old, it will get new ADA service, and we're also going to use a very similar public participation program we did for Wonderwood. So we're excited about that, to see what the people would like to have for a design. The city of Lacey was successful in getting a grant from the state, it's called a Heritage Grant, for eight-hundred-thousand dollars. This money will be used to assess the fifty-seven-hundred building, which is the building on the picture there, off of Lacey Boulevard, and provide guidance on how the existing building can be used for a future museum. We're also going to be able to get plan sets from that project. So this will guide us for any future discussion or future construction of that building. Midtown branding improvements. Council had talked a lot about what to name the Woodland Square Loop area, which people that we refer to as Woodland District, but most people don't know where that is. Midtown was the chosen name, and so we are going to start doing physical branding efforts to either looking at utility boxes or also banners. I will mention, this is a late addition to the budget, so this is not included in the total number, so this will be adjusted as we go through our public process. Police station needs analysis. This is a part two of that. We are trying to assess what is the potential footprint that we need for our Lacey Police Station to serve really a growing population and our public safety needs. So after we spend a hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand dollars, we should learn what type of options that we have before us, and we'll have to have a community discussion of what that means and how we pay for it. Just as a point of reference, when we dedicated the original Lacey Police Station, it was in September eleventh, nineteen eighty-five. I think one thing that we noticed when we've had discussions about homeless, sometimes our public engagement could be improved. And so we are including seventy-five-thousand dollars and really to provide an audit of our communication tools that we have. And also, we'd like to find out where our gaps and weaknesses are, but also come ultimately with a better communication plan to better communicate and engage the community, to make sure that we are moving alongside with the community. This is another item that was a late addition that we're going to have to modify the budget, but we think this is an important enhancement to the budget, so that we can ensure that we are communicating clearly and transparency with the public. Fleet replacement. Again, one-point-two-million dollars is going to be added to the fleet replacement. Some notable additions are two-hundred-thousand-dollar bucket truck, those are not cheap. We're going to be adding about three patrol vehicles, about sixty-seven-thousand dollars per unit. And then we have about twenty additional vehicles and various mowers that are scheduled for replacement that round out that number. Another thing that this community actually did was record a hundred-thousand acts of compassion. This is a partnership with North Thurston Public Schools, as well as the Lacey Chamber of Commerce. There is a committee that is working toward a public art project, and that art project, we think is going to be about twenty-five-thousand dollars. This is something that we're also going to have to probably amend, because it wasn't included in the original budget. But there's been discussion about doing some art mural in Hunter Park to recognize that achievement. This is actually really good news. And I know Steve Kirkman's in the audience, at least I saw him earlier. It took a long time to work with the United States Department of Veterans Affairs. I'll just leave it at that. But what this shows is really the progression. We have had a partnership with Federal Way and Tacoma Veteran Center that provided a community access point. And what that means is, they were taking resources from those two veteran centers, and they were loaning them to the Lacey Veteran Services Hub to provide behavioral counseling. An outstation is actually a level up. That means the federal government is actually providing dedicated resources to our veterans that we're not taking away from Tacoma or Federal Way. Not that it's going to happen, but that's the typical progression. Once you've had an outstation status for some point, and you've basically determined the demand, you would then eventually become a veteran center. And again, I think our Lacey Veteran Services Hub has been a proven model, and it's a key partner that we have when we talk about the other services that we provide to Lacey Veteran Center. Another good thing that council can be proud of, we successfully received two million dollars from the state legislature to do exterior improvements at the South Puget Sound Building Two Campus in Lacey. This will be a needed upgrade. The building is old, excuse me, is old, and we'll do a complete exterior envelope upgrade of that building, which will be a needed upgrade, given the fact that the number of veteran appointments that we have there. So let's talk about utilities, since that is the majority of the total budget. This is to pull us to point out really the complexity of running a utility. I know when we talk about water, we turn the water on, it happens twenty-four-seven, and it's not that it's magic, there's a lot of moving parts that go into that. Our water system consists of twenty wells, seven reservoirs, we have seven booster stations, we have served twenty-five-thousand water counts, and we have four-hundred miles of water mains. Likewise, in wastewater, we have forty-eight lift stations, thirty-thousand-four-and-fifty step tanks, and over two-hundred miles of sewer mains. And so as you can see, combined even with stormwater, there's fifty-two-hundred catch basins that we are ultimately responsible for. This is very, getting very close to a quarter of a billion-dollar asset for the city of Lacey. Real quickly, in terms of our customer base, we serve not only city customers, but also customers in our UGA, which will eventually become part of the city, about twenty-six-thousand in water and about nineteen-thousand in wastewater. You'll notice that there is no stormwater customers in UGA, because Thurston County provides that service. So here's your utility budget at seventy-nine million dollars for twenty-twenty. And here is essentially where that seventy-nine million dollars is distributed. So fourteen million in water, eighteen in wastewater, three in stormwater. And then capital, as you see, rises and falls, but we have a fairly robust capital program at nineteen million and fifteen million wastewater. program at 19 million and 15 million in wastewater and then stormwater is the least of that. We're working on a stormwater comprehensive plan update and that number will probably rise once more projects are actually included. I will point out the $18.1 million is not all the responsibility of the city of Lacey. There's about $12 million that's associated with LOT, which is really about two-thirds of that MNO. We take that money from the customer base and then what that does is support the wastewater treatment plant down in Olympia. So, this is the rate proposal for 2020. This shows two years past, but 2018, there was an adjustment of 3% in water, 3% in 2019. We're proposing a 3% rate adjustment in 2020. You can see the result, that's a dollar-per-month increase. And then wastewater, we're taking a 3%, which is an essential cost of inflation, which would equate to a 64 cent per month. And then, 4.5% in stormwater. Overall, we always try to compare, although it's tough to compare to Olympia, Tumwater and Lacey, but this is how our rates, again, in 2020, you'd have a total utility bill, assuming you're using 900 cubic feet of water, of just under $110 a month. Compared to Olympia, they're about 107 and then if you look at our previous year, we were about $106. I guess one thing I would point out too, there's about $41 embedded in there, which goes to LOT, if you want to look at what that rate consists of for wastewater. So, 41 of that is $62. So, utility improvements, very quickly, this are the major improvements that we're looking at in 2020, not all, but some of the highlights. Thurston County right now is rebuilding Mollant Road. We had a need to upgrade our water line in that area. So, we are going to be taking an existing 12-inch line and upgrading it to a 16-inch line, as well as replace the remaining 12-inch lines in that road. That's a $1.3 million project. Council's aware of this. We passed a emergency resolution a couple of weeks ago. We have a need for a well rehab project in two of our wells. Those well sources are three and seven. Well seven is our largest, which pumps actually 2.6 million gallons per day, at least has that capability. Rehab will consist of potentially new pumps, as well as reconditioning the screen so we can actually regain some of the capacity of those pumps. Lift Station 15 is actually in process. This will be the final year. Lift Station 15 is by LA Fitness and Walmart. This will upgrade the electrical and add onsite generator to avoid disruptions during power outages and swap out the vacuum pumping, the prime pumping system and submersible pumping systems in case you're interested. Lift Station 21 is another rehab project. This one is next to Pacific Avenue by the Mayan Restaurant. This was built in 1994. It's also receiving a similar upgrade. This also was started in 2019 and should be completed by 2020. Capital City Golf Course, which is south of Yelm, it's just in our UGA area, is a $3.1 million fire flow project. This is an area that has older water lines and we need to be able to meet fire flow capacity if there was ever a fire. We're also looking at, and we'll talk about this in more detail later, a Capital City septic-to-sewer conversion project, which is just under $3 million. This has been a discussion with council for probably going back six years. There's concern that well four is being impacted by nitrate or higher than, higher than, higher nitrate levels that we think are related to the 400 septic tanks that are in the area. This will be the first phase of that project. The other project is a new reservoir. This is probably the first reservoir or water tower type that we've had. We typically do, what do you call those, just standard reservoirs, columns?
Stand pipe.
Stand pipe? Well, that's a stand pipe. What do you call the regular reservoirs?
They're down pipe.
Okay, anyway. So, we have a need for a new reservoir, about a .75 million gallon capacity. Part of the reason, this is a cost-saving measure to have a skinny flute, if you will, and then the bulbous at the top, so you're not overbuilding capacity, but we also need to have an elevation to make sure you're maintaining pressure. So, that project will begin, it's a million dollars for next year. Ultimately, that's going to be a $7 million project. And, we have maintenance holes throughout the city. The before and after, I think, pretty much says it all. Wastewater, believe it or not, actually will start to eat away at concrete and eventually into rebar. And so, we periodically have to go into our manholes and actually recondition those. So, this is, this is bad, this is good. And so, we are looking to do about 31 manholes next year to repair. So, the septic-to-sewer conversation or conversion project. So, at a policy level, the city council has wrestled with this problem of urban septic tanks, not only just the environmental impacts, but really the costs associated with doing a conversion program. This is the area of concern. What this chart shows is monitoring a well four and what you're seeing is nitrate concentrates at milligrams per liter and we're consistently above four milligrams per liter. So, council, at the urging of council, wanted staff to determine the nexus between septic tanks and the impact on the water source. So, what this slide shows is that we did testing of our water source and we found Splenda, or basically artificial sweetener in our water source. So, the only way that really gets there is because the human body does not digest artificial sweetener, then it'll probably end up into your septic tanks. And then eventually, since that's a shallow well, that would be in a sense, a way to determine if septic tanks have a direct influence on that water source. So, that is why we are looking at this as a conversion project. Here are kind of the levels that you need to be concerned about. Two milligrams per liter is considered background. Once you go beyond that, there's a concern for the future water source. Once it starts to give four, as I mentioned, or you need to start looking at where those contaminant sources are. Five milligrams per liter is actually, we're now under mandatory monitoring to make sure it doesn't go higher than that. There have been times when it's actually gone as high as seven milligrams per liter. So, that is why, again, we're planning a project in Capital City. Again, to mention, that's a very shallow well at 66 feet to 80 feet. So, here's the project budget for the Capital City Golf Club Estates. We are combining it with the water flow, but really the two numbers to be concerned about is the $10.3 million septic-to-sewer conversion and then the septic tank decommissioning, which is about 7.5 million dollars. So, the big question is, how do you pay for this? Our goal is to create a program that would generate about $2.5 million. Obviously, this is going to have an impact on rates. There is some logic to have 60% of the ratepayers pay for that because the majority of the work will be inside of the right-of-way, which would be a sewer asset. So, that's why 6% of that cost would be borne by sewer accounts. And then, we're trying to protect a water source that is used by everyone and so, that's why 40% is actually being paid by water customers. What this shows is, it would take five years to get to that $2.5 million annual program goal and then take an additional four-plus years to actually pay that off of that $17.7 million. Ultimately, that means a $9.88 rate increase over that time. An alternative would be to somehow look at maybe extending that time period to a seven year. You achieve maybe the same results, but there's going to be a reduced impact onto ratepayers. This is something where we would probably be recommending the longer alternative to lessen the impact of ratepayers. We'll be talking about this when we talk about revenue resources or the revenue public hearing that we have scheduled for November 9th. So, this is for council's consideration for discussion. We'll have more discussion at a future meeting. So, lodging tax. In Lacey, we have eight motels that consist of about 652 hotel rooms. There is a motel tax of 4%. To your right is kind of a bill of what that would equate to. Once that money is collected, we use that to support tourism-related events. Our budget for 2020 is just under $600,000. This is a budget history of how we've basically looked at lodging tax over the years. The blue, I'll just tell you, is reserves in terms of what we have used when we've tried to supplement our lodging tax current revenues. This year, we had 20 applications. All 20 applications were accepted and reviewed by the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee and are recommending the $596,250 budget to city council. The one new event is the PolyFest, which is pictured there at 6,750. And then, the other events that you've seen in the past in terms of events that we've funded for Lacey. Do you have a question, Mayor?
I didn't think the Lodging Tax Committee has made their final recommendations yet.
They have.
Recommendations, but not to council.
So, this is the, so the final action that the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee made was that action or recommendation to city council?
For this budget.
For this budget.
So, he is reporting it before I did, that's fine.
Okay, yeah, because we haven't received that final. I thought that the Lodging Tax Committee was still making some decisions.
We have some housekeeping, but we've deliberated on the, on the budget already.
Okay, thank you.
But, we haven't, I haven't reported it to council yet.
Great, thank you.
Typically, we need the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee to report back, at least to staff, by the first part of October, so we include it in the budget document.
So, if you were surprised, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, I just know we haven't. So, this says debt of ours. I think this is something where council should be very proud in terms of their fiscal stewardship of the public's dollars. What this slide shows is that statutorily, doesn't mean we can afford it, we can actually put ourselves into debt of almost $480 million. We have not done that. We have chosen to be prudent in how we do our debt financing. We're actually at $17.4 million. Again, I think that's something where council should be proud of the fact in terms of how that we are using our dollars. Here is a summary of our debt payments. We have annual debt payments of about $2.4 million. I would point out, in about seven years, that debt could actually reduce by another million dollars as we pay off our fire safety bonds and two of our park improvements by 2026. So, again, that will also be a lessened debt on our city of Lacey residents. And again, this is another thing that I think is a hallmark of kind of how our fiscal stewardship has been. Standards and Poor actually upgraded our rating, our general fund, to a AAA status. There is only 10 cities, us included, in the state of Washington that actually has a AAA rating. So, that is very rare company to be in when you think there's 281 cities and towns within the state of Washington. So, again, I applaud the council and finance department for navigating our finances judiciously. So, let's talk about the value of services. I think that is the biggest thing that when we talk about, at least this is your city manager, I am always conscious of the fact, how do we convey value to our community in terms of what they pay? I understand that property taxes are always in angst in terms of what they pay to support their local government, but at some point, I want to be able to convey that we are providing great service at a great value. This is a slide to try to demonstrate on sort of a typical home of what an average house is paid in city property taxes, not all property taxes, but just the city's portion over time. So, again, in 2010, that's when Fire District Three took over the responsibility for fires, so that's why it dropped down to 274. But, if you look at really from 2011 to 2019, that is a modest increase when you consider what the city provides on a 365-day basis. Another way to look at that is, what, how do we compare to inflation? So, this is again, another house, we use the base year of 2005. At that time, that house would have paid just under $2,000 in taxes. What does that look like if you just put normal inflation compared to what the rise of cost of government was? So, again, as you can see, government is just under $2,700. Inflation, if you took that same amount of money at just under 2,000, would be just $2,963. You'll notice there was a sharp rise in 2018. That was reflective of the McCleary decision that state legislature did as a one-time fix and that's why it's now dropped down. Again, we are a government of many in Thurston County. We don't have the largest share, but our share is really about 11.4 cents out of every dollar that you pay in property taxes. The largest being our school district, then the state, and then obviously Fire District Three. And then, you can see where the rest actually go in terms of the ecosystem of governments that you rely on in terms of where you pay your property taxes. So, for what is the increase in property taxes from 2019 to 2020? I realize that everyone has an average house of $300,000, but that's the house value that we typically use to try to explain taxes. So, in 2019, you would have paid on an annual basis $373 in taxes. That includes the regular levy rate, as well as the excess levy rate, which is the voter-approved debt that voters agree to. If you compare that to what the assessed valuation increased by, which is just under 9%, that same house would have grown to about $326,000, which with the new levy rate, you would be at $3, or I'm sorry, not $3, $375.65. So, again, that's a $2.36 increase compared to last year is what that property tax increase would look like. So, again, trying to convey value. I don't know if you're any, if we have any 12th Man fans in here, but if you wanted to get two Seahawk tickets to a San Francisco game on December 29th, 2019, it's going to cost you $450 and those aren't great seats. That's still, that is still more than what you pay in annual property taxes. If you have a cell phone, which I think we all have cell phones, that is about an $80 a month per charge. That is the typical cell phone bill for an individual. If you have a used car payment, the average used car payment is now $381 per month. Again, a great value when you think of what the city of Lacey provides. And then, average cable bill, I don't think I need to explain that any further, that's obviously more expensive than city property taxes. So, again, another way to kind of show what property taxes do are compared to things that we don't think about maybe as much. So, this is the total effect of the 2020 budget on Lacey taxpayers or our utility customers. There'd be a 20% per month property tax increase. If you look at water, there's a dollar wastewater, 64 cents, stormwater, 51 cents. That'd be a $2.35 net impact or $28.30 per year. This obviously does not include the capital state's decision because we don't know what that final decision is. But, again, excluding that, that is what the impact of this budget is. So, public participation. This is obviously the first night that you're hearing about the budget, but we have more discussion. We are going to be talking about our revenue sources on Thursday, November 7th, which will also include property taxes. We will do a total budget overview again on that same night if you happen to miss my presentation. The proposed budget will also have another public hearing on November 14th, so we have two opportunities to make direct comments to city council on that. And then, December 5th, the city council will make an adoption decision on December 5th. If you'd like the complete document electronically, you can go to our website. That's where the URL is if you want to find that. And then, before I open it for questions, I just want to thank the executive team for all the work putting into the budget. It is really about a three-plus-month process trying to gather information, gather the data, have realistic proposals that we think are going to be defensible and that the council can support, as well as the community. I'd like to call out Mr. Wu for all of his help and assistance when we put these together. Appreciate his fiscal leadership and finance knowledge in terms of trying to put one of the most significant documents the city puts together on an annual basis. And also, Donna Flesiano, I'm not the person who put the slide presentation together, although I wish I had those skills. So, I do appreciate all the time and effort she put on that. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions about the 2020 total budget.
Mr. Mayor?
So, and it may be buried in a number of the items and I don't know that because I haven't read this book yet, but how, how much is being designated to put in, or at least, I know sort of how much is being put in for the climate mitigation plan, but have we set aside anything for potential projects going forward? And I know some of it is based on grants, like PSE is giving us all the EV stuff and whatever, but...
So, we don't have anything in the current budget. We're still waiting for that report. So, obviously, we participated in the report with TRPC as well as Olympia, Thurston County and Tumwater. Once they talk about action items, I'm sure there'll be a discussion with council and we'd have to talk about what the cost of those items would potentially be and to see if council would support those or not.
Okay.
Councilor?
Thank you. So, I have 15 questions and I'll try to go through them and I don't expect anything more than abbreviated answers. Knowing for the good of the order that we will have future presentations of the budget as you, as you work through the budget season. So, my first question is, the retail sales tax rate versus the dollar growth. Might you, your slide, if you, if you are able to refer to the slide in question, you talked about a gross dollar rate, I believe. I was just curious if you knew what the rate change was on that, or was that answered in one of your last slides?
So, we're talking about just retail, not total sales tax?
I think the slide and maybe down the road, we could number the slides that I could make my notes better, but the retail sales tax rate versus dollar growth is one of the very first slides and I'm going in order.
Okay, maybe we'll go to your second question as I kind of keep going through this.
In a previous work session, you provided a very interesting data about staff per capita.
Yes.
And on your current slide, it was more of staff per home, or was it?
Per thousand.
Per thousand. You did, you did provide staff per capita here?
Yes, per thousand.
Okay.
So, right here, this again, shows...
Per thousand, yeah.
Right. So, if historically, we're still not at 2010 levels or even 2012 levels.
Thank you. Thank you. The community resource officers that you mentioned in your law enforcement increases, those are specifically for schools, is that right?
No, they actually are a separate unit. They're different than the school resource officer. It's actually a community resource unit.
Okay.
And so the idea, you know, Officer Feecheck, he is one of those officers that are in that unit. So this will supplement his activities to deal again with homeless response, working with neighborhoods, crime prevention. So again, it's a very proactive force to be able to solve issues before they happen.
Okay, and so then back to regarding schools. School security is a number-one national, it's a big national issue right now.
Right.
We have some school resource officers.
We have three.
But not at every school. And whose call is it to also provide such services, or at least rotate services into the private schools?
So we've never looked at private schools. We have a partnership with North Thurston Public Schools that offsets about a quarter of the cost of the expense of school resource officers. We have three. They are basically our Timberline, River Ridge, and North Thurston Public Schools or High School. And then they also serve the feeder schools, the middle schools, elementary to those areas.
Okay.
And so they're present there, you know, every day during the school year.
Thank you. Regarding the parks numbers that you showed, we have a recent history of forwarding a bond initiative to the citizens. My curiosity is, should that ever happen? Would that put that, this budget into a different district outside of the city? Or how does that work? I'm curious.
So going back to what council looked at and what was before the voters, the MPD was actually going to be operated by the city council. So actually, it would come under the authority of the city council. It would be tracked though as a separate fund. But then those funds potentially could go to the general fund to offset either park projects, new parks, or also future operations.
Thank you. You're doing great. Okay, so on snow removal, you mentioned it was a minor part of the budget. I would state from my chair at transportation that one of the reasons that it's a, it's a low budget is because of the high technology and efficiency that we implement. When we get what we call, what actually you call snow magedons that come through, we do a good job of dealing with that on short order, even though it's 24/7 for a few days, whatever. My question is, being that so insignificant, would there ever be a, and I don't intend to pun, but a vehicle by which the city budget would ever be able to handle private, or not private roads, but side roads? Because in the last snow mageddon, it seems like the side roads were the, the biggest problem for our citizens.
It is, and I think we've talked a lot about that. It takes almost, I want to say 12 to 16 hours to go through our entire arterial system. So about the time that you finish our arterial streets, and if it's continuing snowing, we need to then go back and do that again. Again, given the frequency of snow removal and also being sensitive to obviously the taxpayer, the cost-benefit analysis doesn't necessarily justify more expenditure in that area, given what we've experienced the last 10 to 12 years.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just check in with the rest of the council real quick? Does anyone else have any questions before going back? I would like to spread it around a little bit, if you don't mind, council member.
I don't mind. I hope I can finish my question, you know. Thank you.
I do, but he's kind of on the roll.
Let's go to council member Cox, and then we'll just make sure everyone can be heard, then we can go back to Jason.
Well, I think you've done an excellent job of putting this together. I did notice that we just got informed that for the first time in, what, several years now, sales tax has started to take a dip. And I know our sister communities have already been seeing it before we have. So I guess my question to you is, does this budget anticipate a slight decline in sales tax receipts?
So we have been very conservative, believe it or not. That 2.56 is a conservative number that we don't think would be impacted by a sales tax downturn. So what I think we're saying is that potentially it could be greater than that, but we're concerned about if there is eventual downturn or if construction actually reduces, that would have a negative impact. So again, Troy and I go back and forth on this about what is the appropriate level to do that? And I think it's been proven over time that we've been judicious in making sure that we're not overestimating revenues.
Can you remind us what the 2018 actuals was? Is that, that 2018 actuals, the 10?
I'll refer to Mr. Wu, but I think we were close to maybe 12-plus million dollars in that year of actual revenues. And so that gap would then go back into our reserves, and it's allowed council to respond to emerging issues and have flexibility.
And then where are we at year-to-date?
Let me answer the first question, Mr. Mayor. The 2018 actuals were 12.6 million. The year-to-date is... I apologize, I'm trying to open up a file here. You have three minutes.
That's, that's, I guess that's one of my questions I have under the budget, detailed budget, section 3.1. It's, it's not really driving with the same numbers that you have here. And so I was just wondering, are you needing to update that? Because it says the 2019 amended budget was 10 million 200,000. We, we know it's considerably more than that. If 18 is 12.6, then you're showing the 2020 proposed budget down at 11 million. And here you have a 12, 12.56 million, so.
So I'd point you to 2018 is probably the more, that's actual, 2019 is amended, so we won't know 2019. So again, going back to 12.6, that's the number that Mr. Wu recorded.
Yeah, I see that.
Right.
I was just making sure he was going to tell me the same number.
Okay.
And then, but the 2020, it says 11.6, and you're saying 12.56 here, so I'm just curious.
Right, there's another allocation of that sales tax that goes to criminal justice fund that gets split out. Goes into a different fund, but it's still within the general fund.
The year-to-date, Mr. Mayor, is based on their accrual basis is about 8.5 million, which is very compared, same period for 2018 is 8 million. So we're about half a million ahead of last year.
So half a million up. Okay, thank you. Anyone else before we go back to councilor?
So the city manager mentioned cost-benefit analysis. So the cost of the capital city septic-to-sewer conversion, what was that amount again?
About 17-plus million dollars.
17? And is there a cost-benefit analysis of what would happen if we had to take well four offline due to contaminants?
So I think you, council's very...
Rates or whatever.
Well, council's very aware of the fact that there's, it's very difficult to get new water resources. So from that standpoint, the cost of water is an unknown to trying to get new water resources. If we went to the extent of actually not addressing this issue, and then actually the nitrates were elevated beyond that seven milligrams per liter, we at some point would have to build some treatment facility on that.
It's probably, for argument's sake, going to be at least 17 million to do something like that or close to it?
We believe it would be in that range. That's my point. Thank you.
Okay, then Deputy Mayor, then we'll go back to them.
So another thing, you mentioned that you're putting, looking at, I think you said 11 new vehicles for the fleet. And I realize there's construction fleet kind of costs and stuff. Are any of those though for EV vehicles to be able to share and stuff?
We don't, the majority of vehicles that we're replacing is actually the total's 24. Like the bucket truck doesn't necessarily fit in the category of an EV. There's a lot of three-quarter-ton pickup trucks that are going to be placed in our utility department. There's mowers, which I'm not quite sure if there's a mower on the market that's completely electric that would do that for our park system. And then obviously, we've talked about patrol cars. I mean, I think I somewhat joked to chief that I think a Tesla has been used before, but...
Ran out of juice in the high-speed chase.
Given the per-unit cost of a Tesla, it may not be the, the most effective way. But again, at some point, I would say in five to seven years, there's going to be more options for municipalities for more EV vehicles.
Because we have four chargers right here.
Well, just the market is trending that way. I think Ford announced that they're going to build a new electric F-150. And so I think you're going to see more marketplace opportunities for electric vehicles.
And we could amend the budget to...
If there was, if there was a proven tool out there, yes, we would take a look at that.
Councilmember Hearn?
Thank you. Back to the snow, is there an insurance that ever would be beneficial to, to buy to snow? Or is our, are our costs so low, it's not, not worth it?
State of emergency?
Yeah, I'm just interested in concept. We have not really talked about it. Would you bet on a, you know, an insurance policy if we had a really bad snowstorm? But no, we have not looked at that.
It'd be interesting to look at. Okay, so do we have a timeframe? You mentioned in the report, the future roundabouts on 16th and 29th. Do you have any ballpark idea, or is that based on national or, you know, grants and?
It is. It is very dependent on grants and our ability to get those grants here to the state or federal level. And so at this point, it could be five to 10 years.
So we have design funds for the roundabout at 16th, but we don't have construction funds. So yeah, it's outside of our control. It's dependent on the state and federal grants that come along and how competitive those projects would be.
Okay, thank you. You mentioned a multi-lane roundabout, was that Britton?
Hawks Prairie.
Hawks Prairie?
Yeah.
Is there not a single or double-lane roundabout being actually helpfully funded by development on Carpenter and Britton? Is that not in this budget?
So you may recall, we did have a briefing at the Transportation Committee meeting, and that has been identified as a future project, but I believe that's still two years out.
Okay, thank you. On the slide versus, on the train depot and the Kid Park, what does that 100,000 refer to?
So $100,000 is our commitment to that project. Rotary's actually going to provide another $50,000 for that, that programmed improvement.
The park?
The Kids Park.
Yep. What is the final budget for the Train Depot replica?
So the depot, that was a 2019 budget item. It's just under $900,000.
Thank you. Midtown, is it, is the proposed name Midtown or Lacey Midtown? I've heard referred to both.
I think it'd go either way.
So that's to be determined?
I, I think Midtown was the name, and then I think it's just however you want to provide Lacey is either, either before or after.
Just like, just like our, just like our city within a city panorama prefers panorama versus Panama City, I would recommend that the council consider Lacey Midtown to be the official name. I'm getting there. Thank you very much for the time. Capital city septic-to-sewer conversion, what was the budget there again?
17 million.
Right, you mentioned that, 17? Thank you. I'm cut through. Oh, the water tower proposal there, or need there. I'd suggest, you know, on the, on the internet, you see some towns that have some very well-done art on such those things. And there's even some country tunes written about that. And we might consider our art budget, council, to take advantage of that and make something that's, puts us on the map, just an idea.
John Deere Green?
I, I'm not an artist, but I'm open to ideas.
Maybe an opportunity for some R&B.
You should test it with John Deere, Deere Green, but I, I hope the council thinks about this.
I think that's a country song.
I, I'm not a big country guy, so. This, the Splenda, the Splenda in the water problem, very serious. Does this study also deal, study pharmaceuticals?
That was not the intent of that, but granted, if we would test that, you'd probably find similar issues. I mean, lots done testing on that, and what you do find out there are just certain pharmaceuticals that do not break down in the body, and they do end up in the collection system.
I'd like to continue to study that. Average house tax chart, great slide, thank you very much. Average house fee inflation chart, excellent slide, thank you very much. What are you proposing? I know it's a moving target right now, but what are you proposing for 2020 for homeless mitigation?
So that is a kind of a moving target. So as councilall knows, we had a very public meeting regarding Main Street, so we did have funds in there. So at one point, we had at least $100,000 for Main Street. That's, we're not going to spend that amount of money. We're actually diverting that down to the city hall parking lot. So that's probably going to be reduced by half, although the budget reflects a, a higher number. We do have a contract for $150,000 as part of the homeless response for cleanup. Again, we don't know if we would expend that money. We don't think so. But there are times when we come across camps on public property, we need a funding source to respond to that.
Final question, as we go in towards this year and this moving target happens, how late can the council and put the decided-upon homeless mitigation budget final into the budget? What's the deadline for us to not be able to do that?
I mean, typically, up until the last public hearing is really like the last opportunity to make a significant change to the budget.
Is that November this year or December this year, do we know?
That's the 14th of November.
So a month away.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
I do. I'm glad to see that there's some money proposed for communications. And I'm wondering if, how much of that has to do with, we've had some talks about some sort of phone application to be able to communicate with our constituents better through the city. And also wondering about some sort of communication director kind of situation, which obviously that is not enough money to have a full-time person do.
Haven't, we thought maybe the processes, once we do that audit in terms of what our strengths and to some degree weaknesses are, that would actually be part of that analysis of how we do as a public affairs department in a city and do our communication. Do we have enough resources? Still, just being mindful of the fact that depending, and we add employees, we're just going to make sure we're able to sustain that. But I think that's a topic that could come out of that.
So that's $75,000. I was trying to look for it in, under the city manager's tab, but it's not there.
Correct. So that is, as I've kind of mentioned, that is a late addition to the budget, so it's not included in the budget document. We'll have to make an adjustment to that if council approves of that $75,000. But again, I think just based on the experience we've had the last couple of months, talking about some fairly large issues with the community, we need to, in a sense, step up our game.
Great, thank you.
Well, I have several questions, but I, I will talk to you offline on it. You know, these budgets are always kind of difficult to read, and it's always, always hard sometimes when you're trying to talk to the public about, you know, your budget, because there's so many different aspects to it. And just like the sales tax, you know, why, why is it looking like it's not all under sales tax? Well, there's another tab someplace else that we didn't know about. I did want to bring up one specifically under the most important budget item, the city council budget. Our, this last year, we, in 2019, we added, and we increased our neighborhood grant program. And that program has been seen as the one of the most successful programs in the city of Lacey. There are a lot of projects that need to happen throughout our neighborhoods that are very important to the character of the city of Lacey and that do not have a funding source. And so we increased that budget this past year.
We did.
And we still had more applicants than we could give out. I, I would highly suggest that we take a look at that number, and you would work with the staff involved and to see a more appropriate number that should reflect the city of Lacey and, and that neighborhood grant program. I'm not sure where the council is on that, but...
So I totally agree, because one of the things that those grants could go for is helping meet our mitigation plan. So, you know, whatever, but, but that is a really important way for the community to be involved. So I would look to see if we could increase it too.
And then the, the other one is, I know you, you put a small number down there for youth council. One of the things that we are asking from our youth councils for the youth council to come up with a major, for a project for the city of Lacey. And so we have no idea what they're going to come up with or what they're going to propose. But I, I hope you're not limiting it to the number that you have in the budget. You know, if they wanted, I'm not, who knows, they're going to have to come and... not, who knows, they're going to have to come and propose a project to this full council, and they're going to have to sell us on it, and we're going to have to ask some questions. But I hope it's not limited to the number that's in the budget.
Yeah, I think this council knows, and I think we've done a pretty good job. As much as we like to make this the final budget, I mean, it is a kind of living document. We've had councilmembers in the past talk about that, and if there are appropriate items that need council attention and have that support, then we'll make those appropriate amendments throughout the year.
And the one last thing I have is, under special events, under city council, it's dropping significantly from the 2019 amended budget. I was just wondering...
I think that was our experience, based on the mayor's gala. We did a lot better of sort of having an experience on running that event, and so, we think we can do it at that cost point, versus what we did in previous years.
Perfect. Counselor.
I just had some, you mentioned your support of the community grant program, and sort of the deputy mayor. Could you help me and unpack that a little bit about where you saw the success? I'm not questioning it, but where you saw the success of that? And then, I'd like to kind of respond. You asked for some input.
Sure. Were you pretty involved in that program? Who's on the staff side was?
So, it's public affairs. So, what that program's allowed, we've had a lot of our HOAs come forward, and they've been anywhere from beautification projects, dealing with trees that were having negative impacts on their open space areas, mailbox replacement has been one of those items that they've done, refurbishing the entrance sign. So, those have been the almost community-based projects that have been funded out of the neighborhood grant program.
Okay, that helps me. So, you suggested that we consider more for that. I would suggest, from the, for Scott's benefit, that we also identify what that should come from, versus an unfunded, you know, it has to come from somewhere.
Yeah, and Troy, can you give us an update on where we're at on our reserves for 2019 and going into 2020?
Is there something specific you would?
I would like to know.
How much dough we got?
Yeah. Overall, how much reserves are we sitting on for the city of Lacy? That's another number that it's just almost impossible to find in this budget.
Right, so that's, we have twenty-nine different funds, so, do you want me to limit to maybe general fund?
Just give me an overall, where's, what do you think are, how much are we sitting on in reserves for the city?
Well, just the general fund alone is about thirty-five million or so.
I would acknowledge that. I would also acknowledge that this year, we had a perfect bond rating, in large part to our reserve strategy.
No, there's no doubt. There's no doubt. But we are sitting on a significant reserves.
So, to put that in perspective, that thirty-five million has been committed toward either priorities or projects that council has done. Not that it can't be redirected. So, point taken. I just want to make sure. And then, we are going to be bringing that Gatsby fifty-four resolution back to council, that will actually formalize those commitments.
Yeah. Well, it's the same thing I talk about every single year, is how much we budget for the year compared to how much the actuals are, and what's the difference? And those automatically go into reserves, but we don't really have a good tool to see that number. And it's difficult to say how, you know, how we're doing. Obviously, we have a triple-A rating, but, you know, from year over year, how much are we, how much do we budget for, what are the actuals, and then, you know, what's the difference? And that goes into reserves. And that's been always difficult to try to figure out.
And just maybe for the benefit of the public, too, so we have at least two to two-point-five million dollars set aside for future replacement synthetic fields at the rack. So, at some point, if we need that in seven years, we have that money without putting a burden on taxpayers. We are slowly trying to generate enough reserves to pay for a future police station, if that, at some point, is appropriate. I would say that's close to five million dollars. So, again, that's a portion of that. We also have some large commitments that we've made to northeast Lacy, in the Gateway Project, that are approaching seven, eight million dollars. That kind of explains a little bit of the ecosystem of the thirty-five million.
Yeah, and I understand, we've had all those in reserves for a quiet while.
Right.
Is there any other questions? Well, it looks like we're at the end of our agenda. Thank you, Scott, for standing up there and taking the questions, and for presenting a great 2020 budget. I'm sure we'll, it's a living document, as we've talked about, and we'll take input from our community over the next couple of council meetings, and I look forward to that as well. And so, we've reached the end. I will call this meeting adjourned, and as always, keep it classy, Lacy.